Um, I don't know this, Teresa, I just have a question on this. When they pay that TIF money out, they have to have an actual bill in hand, correct? At City Hall, so that money has to be, you have to already place that before they...
Before it... You can go on Purchase Order 2, right? You can use things like Purchase Orders. But you have to have hard, to disperse the money, you have to have hard copies.
But it's locked into someplace, because when you get that Purchase Order, that bill, it says X amount of dollars to this person.
When you read deeply into TIF, I mean, it takes a fair amount of planning. You just don't take a number and throw it out in the air. It's not quite that simple. It's not quite so easy to simply say, "This is what I'm gonna do, I want this much money." We have done this in the past. We did this with a couple of businesses that simply threw out a number, and they were reversed, not so much as a receipt, not so much as a plan, not so much as a clue to how it would benefit the community, but the money was spent nonetheless.
But the way it's going now, that's the way it's been running now and being run, so you would know where that money goes before you could measure it.
There has to be a plan, yes. You can't start a project without knowing what the project entails. You just don't say, "We're going to spend about this much money," and just start spending it. The idea is, you don't want a half-finished project. It's simply a matter of priorities. We have to have priorities in the community. I know that that sidewalk on Main Street needs to be repaired, but we don't repair it, we walk around it. I know that the children are stumbling over broken concrete in front of the school to get on school buses, but nothing's been done about that. I know that on Prairie Street, we have preschool children sharing the street with pickup trucks and the dead of winter. There is no place to walk on the side of the street. I'd like someone to be able to tell us what a straight place they think that is, safe and a proper way for children to go to school. We have problems with our sewer system. We have collapses on Union Street. We have periodic failures, and we have to go in and tear up the street. One of these days, we're gonna have to tear up Miller or Franklin, and it ain't gonna be cheap.
Okay, I call with a question.
All right. Call with a question. Do we, if we vote on this motion, to commit the $70,000 to the park fund, leaving $5,298 to the library drainage project?
Yes.
Correct? Call it.
Aye.
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 No.
No, she carries, for a chief.
I have a question. Why was this motion done since it was already voted on?
It was tabled.
It was tabled.
No, it was passed 200, some thousand, year or two ago.
No, no, in a year or two, I think in April.
Yeah. I don't know the date, but...
Yeah, it was March or April. Larry made the motion, as a matter of fact, I believe. Larry made it, wasn't he?
Amending that move?
No, we haven't changed that motion. As far as I know, that motion is, to spend $210,000 on the park, remains in effect?
This is to disperse the TIF.
This is to disperse TIF money from this year on that project.
And please, if we can proceed, and we can bring this in, and we have volunteers that, I mean, we keep hearing about some things, we could be looking by early spring, long before April, of having from $10,000 to $20,000 left that wasn't spent, that then can, then can be used toward other projects.
Is that true, Teresa?
I'm sorry, will you repeat that? I was right.
If we don't spend $70,000...
If we don't spend the $70,000, if we come in, say at $55,000, can that $15,000 be recommitted to other...
Let's also do it by April 1st.
April 1st. April 30th. The money has to be set.
But because it's a city project.
Right.
A city project.
Something like...
Yes, city.
Right. Okay.
All right. Public concerns, at this point, Rich? You've been very patient.
I've got a point very specific.
Yes.
While I'm handing that, let me take the opportunity, or they have to start handing it, we'll all do it in one room. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Some of what we've already discussed, put off the Tri-County, some lines of yours.
Somebody start out by the first thing, asking, do we still want to pursue the grant? Because January, we gotta be working on that, gotta be invited. I think it needs to be invited into January, maybe wrong, maybe March 1st, but I hope approval process is in the name of a deadline for it. So, we have a scheme in, but I just need to know, and maybe I can work a few minutes, see if we can redo that grant. That's correct? I'd be willing to do that. And that's the first thing. The next thing I'm going to talk about is kind of exciting, we're very excited about this, but I also want to keep this within this room, i.e. the press here, but I don't want rumors started. But I would go Thursday, we had a meeting with three people, or three groups, or different people of each group. The Tri-County Opportunities Council, which is based in Rock Falls, a group out of Springfield, if I can pull my card up, and IACA, which is the Illinois Association of Community Action Agencies, and COR, which is a developer, not a developer, but a manager of, I don't wanna call it, develops homes and apartments and that kind of stuff, which, by the way, happens to be represented by Tim Pecky, if you know anybody knows Tim Pecky from Bradford. This is undoubtedly the first major step we have ever taken on housing. These folks, now remember, we had this in Wyoming and Lomond, and two years ago, ran a survey with the idea of getting some Housing Authority money, a couple of them wanting housing, and those funds dried up, so it fell short, but we had that, we paid, that paid, mom and dad paid $50,000 for it. And this Nicole said, "We've already got a bigger step." And the economic, Tri-County Opportunities Council is the vice chair, is Al Harmon, and he had very favorable things to say, and he said that Tulon has a crying need for affordable housing, i.e. Southland. So, we've got a new funding source, it's very creative, this was a plumbary meeting, I don't have any facts and figures, we'll read them again after the first year, but it was the most positive meeting in COR and Good Dickson Development. They use different, you do, talk about TIF money, Houston built a $500,000 affordable housing project, they, between TIF money and tax credits, they got over $200,000, over $300,000. They financed the rest, and debt service, and income from that, what is covered debt service. So, there's a light at the end of the tunnel on the property. And we discussed around it. There's also a whole bunch of other programs, for example, and he used the number, let's say there's a house potentially worth $100,000, it's wrecked and ruined, you can get money, you go and buy that house, and they will spend up to $40,000 to be bringing out the code. The buyer can buy that for 80% down, borrow that money, 80%, they borrow 80,000, or even 60,000, I believe, and the government will take a soft second. Soft second means, you gotta live there 10 years, and you won't owe that second at all, if you sell, and between the 10 years, they prorate the balance of that second. So, there's a number of opportunities here that we're working on, that we were really excited about, and these people saw nothing, based on the study that we put in pursuit. So, we may have to do a study here at Tulon, I don't know if we can use the law in recovering this market or not, but that's, that's the most exciting effort of things, anything ever seen, that looks, we don't have, I don't have a lot of details, we reserve two hours and you can't cover them. The other thing, just to agree with, updates our website, it's gonna be on board, I was hoping it'd be on board by now, but we've got a little glitch in the work, so it won't probably end this week. And then also, we want you to know, we still have financing available, the company, what we see though. Projects coming up, they're starting in January, we have a five-week course, every Friday morning from 7:30 to 9:00. It's called a Leadership Academy, and what we're seeking is folks in the community, such as right here, anybody here wants to attend, there's no charge. We're looking for having a training course on building future leaders, and Rob has agreed to be one of our presenters, and we have a lot of people presenting his five-week course, and we're pretty excited about that, and so we're trying, we'll be getting, we'll hear more about that. But we're looking for attendees, there's no charge, you can call and enroll this morning, and then the last day, you get whatever else. Follow on the heels of that is fast pitch in March, which we ran last year. Fast pitch has nothing to do with softball or baseball, it's simply a fast pitch on your idea or something you can say. And last year, Doug Rappert from Lomond went $30,000, filed that big cash dress, that big current stuff. And that's a Stark County, Henry County, dual finisher. So, that's coming up in March. And then a long first, a long change, particularly with, as Mayor mentioned, Judy Taylor has joined us, and she's good at grant writing, and probably one of the things, one of the things we're finding, not only in Stark County, but on joining counties, is that we have a deficient labor force. One of the companies in, from one of the areas had 100 applications, and 38 of them not before they were interviewed. So, we just don't have qualified people. So, we're working with schools, the junior car, and the colleges, and that will be an ongoing project for a long time. Going back to the housing, I also want to add, H-Servant, that's a two to five-year project, so I don't expect you to see it. But that's another thing that we could use TIF money for. The other thing you might want to look at too is, you get a couple of new, probably new sources of revenue coming in with the collector aggregation, and county's getting about $350 a month from that, and then with the gambling, I don't know what that puts us, which could be getting another $5,000, $8,000, or something like that. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Any questions? Look forward to working on it, maybe we can get some of this grant money coming our way. We turn that into a, a lot of the number on the housing, I'm very excited about it. It's a long-term project, but it's available, and it meets the criteria.
Oh, I'm sorry, Teresa, Rich, when did you say those classes were? I'm sorry.
They start January 15th, I believe. It's a five-week course, it goes through February 18th, I think, it's on a Friday morning.
On Friday, but what time?
7:30 to 9:00.
7:30 to 9:00, okay.
And we're gonna have two of them, Tulon, two in Wyoming, and one in Bradford, assuming we get attendees. If nobody from Bradford does it, then we won't go to Bradford.
Okay, thank you.
But we would like anybody that can attend, we'd like it, encourage it.
First room.
Huh? Am I done? First room. First room, I'll go, sit down, and I'll leave. Jason, you have a question?
Yeah, I have two quick things, both on municipal city ordinance issues. I've noticed this year, more and more people illegally burning, it's my understanding that...
Delegal burning?
Burning.
Yes.
Delegally burned during school hours and until after five on Mondays and Thursdays, and there's been quite a bit of that. I don't know whether people are unaware or whatnot, but middle of the day, you'll come out after eating lunch, and downtown, you're covered in smoke, so...
I don't mind either Thursday or schools and Saturday.
Second thing is, there seems to be an ongoing problem with people not picking up after their dogs on sidewalks, especially in downtown, Tulon. I've found so far, there's many illustrations showing people what to do, and what to pick up, and they've torn them down. It's every three days, I made a suggestion to the Parks Committee, that the city will out-need to purchase, with some of the funds I have available, pet stations, who saw various locations, in hopes that having acceptable means of picking up after your dog would at least make someone feel awfully guilty, but they didn't, they're not to let, so...
In response to your first point, do you think possibly putting a notice in the paper, this among other things, there are probably things that we should remind the folks of. Do you think a notice in the paper, or a flyer with a water bill would be a way to go about this?
Yeah.
Because it seems we had a problem...
If you ask most people what the burn hours were, they have no clue. I know Mondays and Thursdays, I'm putting the laundry days, I'm putting them out for five, and I know that, but I doubt too many people do.
I think maybe it would be a good idea to do something, would you say, Jason, in March would be a good idea, before they burn again? Because it'd be the spring burn season.
Yeah.
Mike?
If you do something like that, I'd like to know, because you asked me to put it in, you put burning on the streets.
Yes.
You're not burning at the fall, or you're burning on the street.
Teresa, would you make a note, put that on your calendar, that in the first, first week of March, that we visit that, and maybe get something either in the April or the water bills, to remind people, and if there's other things we need, let's do that as well, that's a good idea. And your idea about, what did you call it? Delight?
Clean up after.
Parkway Station, yes, I've noticed that pile in front of Main and Washington Street.
Oh, there's multiple piles.
Yeah, there are, there's another one we'll fire up. I think it's a great idea, I mean...
You're not supposed to let your dog go to the park, he's already been gone.
If you were in many places in the country, and you let your dog poop on the street, it's, it's $100 fine, right now.
Is there an ordinance in place?
I don't know. You can't spit, and you can't do some other things, I don't know about your dog. Let's put that, let's check into that, and we'll make a note to call Bruce, and we'll look at our ordinance book, and if we don't have an ordinance, let's put that on the agenda for next month. We'll have to talk about this at the dead of winter, that way we're ready to go into spring. I'm with you, Jason, I've, I didn't quite know what to do, I've picked up a lot of empty bottles and cans, but I didn't really feel like picking up the dog dirt.
Yeah.
Well, we're just talking about here and there, how about some handicap parking on
Main Street? What are the channels about going around?
Just do it.
I've got two or three people that, you know, have asked me about it, and especially right along, you know, like maybe towards the grocery store, or the restaurant, or the...
Mark, can you help us, let it all, what's required for us to make a handicap spot? Do you know anything about it?
When I, not all through, I don't, I did work for the P. Street Department at one time, years ago. We just put the sign up and painted it red.
If you want to, go ahead, Mike.
You have to say where you're gonna put those.
Yes.
And tell us that those are gonna be handicap spots, and then once you do that, they can be put in as handicap spots. The thing is, you need to put them where there's handicap accessibility to the sidewalk, which on Main Street, there's only like four spots, it's that way you definitely either end of it, or right there in the middle, or Park Place Alley, because that's really the only place that that sidewalk is handicapped accessible.
Well, I guess, Connie, that'd be a good thing for the streets, if you guys want to, if you want to make a recommendation to the council, I'm sure a simple resolution will do, and Mike marks it, and that's it, because the law reads it, it's marked handicapped, it is handicapped.
Well, there's one in front of the bank, you know, sits, there's one there, and I just thought...
Maybe if there was, if it's...
The Park Places, you know, where it's at, even if it was one in front of the bar, or one in front of the ice cream place, and there's handicap, you know, I mean, it's slanted there.
Yeah, that's one place you...
That would help, I mean, I, I, the hell is...
I think if you, give us a map, a map, Main Street, whatever you like, and, and make the proposal. I can't see the three or four handicap spots, or, I'm just shooting a number there, maybe you want five, I don't know.
No, I don't think...
But there's nothing, there's nothing saying that we can't do that, that we can't establish a handicap parking spot.
You know, State Highway, you have to do anything.
Well, I don't think so. We'll check it over Bruce, but it's like they're in front of the bar in the alley, who painted the curb red, that people regularly park there. How you want to make it a handicap spot, I guess we could, it's just that we always said, "No parking in the alley," and then we said, "Well, it was a fire lane," and...
Now they park everywhere.
Now we'll park wherever they want, so we, we can do what we want with our streets, I think.
We'll have to check the setback on the crosswalk there.
Yes. Yes. Crosswalks and corners, we, and the size of the spot, we have some regulations to deal with, I'm aware of that. Make us a proposal. Jim, I'll forget his last name.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, was going to make us propose one presentation tonight about possibly using part of our City Hall, old City Hall, we use to do our meetings, for expansion of his business. He also had discussed the possibility of a meeting last month with us, TIF, making up half the question, TIF, I hope we have it standing off in the earlier discussion with that.
You gotta call.
He gotta call, good, I hope we didn't go way missing, he just went away.
He gotta call.
All right, well, maybe he'll come back. All right, hope for that. We have, and new business, unless there's anything else in public concerns. Mike?
The only other thing I have is, we will be changing over to winter vehicles, basically, chains, senders, so I think we should suspend the yard waste pickup until next April or May.
All right, make a notice of that. What about notice, putting a notice in the paper about the parking ordinance with snow?
We should probably should put that in there too.
And should we do something so people know where they're not supposed to park? We've had a lot of discussion about that over the years.
Basically, downtown is a, is a snow road.
Can you give us a proposal in December in our meeting? Would that be too late to publish our park's snow ordinance?
You already have it.
Third week in December, when we get early snows.
We've had one that we used to publish in the past, I don't know if we still have copies of it or not.
We haven't. We just haven't enforced it, the people aren't aware of it.
So, I mean, we've already got, all we have to do is, is, I'm gonna need to put it in the paper.
Connie, can you, any input on that?
No, I should think about something else, but I forgot about this important.
Don?
On that sidewalk where people are falling, are we crying that off, or...
It's possible, yeah.
Should we go ahead and do that?
I hate to say it, but, I think under the nets, I think all the sidewalks on Main Street, I hate to say it, but I think a lot of it's got to do with this, this toilets and the sewers and the stuff underneath it.
Ah, well, there's, I mean, they were just put in so long ago, and they were poured over the old ones. You do have some cavities and voids that were from, you know, like in front of your business, that was all dug up, put back with the sand and...
Because I know in front of the bars, you know, where the pipes go out in the street, in those old buildings, the walls are caved in, in my building, up to the front, all that stuff, you know, I don't know, and it's just old, it's old.
Connie, since after the bear, we've dug up that spot in front of the bar, the grocery store, three times.
I know, and it's just, you know...
I mean, those are the kind of things that we're dealing with.
There's a couple spots, like smack in front of, it's almost in front of, uh, sew, kind of, where it's, it's raised up, you know, and that's what they stub their toe on, and there's another one up a little closer to where I was, and, you know, we've even painted them.
We'll see if we've done wrong, right?
We've done, you know, the worst thing is, I think, there was a, now we can't see it, or, you know, something to that, and...
I agree with you, something basically done.
You know, and I, I know they're bad, but they've been bad for, I've been uptown for almost, how many years, and they've been bad ever since day one, so...
The problem is, it's not a cheap fix.
No, I know, that's, that's why it hasn't been fixed, but...
We have to, we have to have the will to fix it, to spend the money, but it's gonna take the risk. I guess we're on public concerns, unless there's anything else. Water billing procedures, and I think the water, can we combine those down, or do you want to deal with them separately for a, a ordinance for each?
Probably, I'm not sure if we really need a ordinance, or if it's just a resolution to set a procedure. I really don't know what we need more, because, may I get up?
Yes, you may, for sure.
Okay. The water billing procedure as it is now, okay, and I know some of you are not gonna be able to see this, but this is the biggest calendar I could get. Our present procedures now is, from the 1st through the 10th, the meters are red. The billing doesn't go out until the 25th. The bills are due on the 5th of the following month. And then, as it is now, then, if anything is not paid by noon the following day, they send out a reminder, past due bill, almost looks like our, the regular bill, right? Then from there, then, of course, what normally, there, there was a resolution passed in a council meeting that said that they wanted those water, past water due accounts tagged the Thursday before the meeting. So, this is the Thursday before the meeting, there's the meeting, okay, but of course, if you're sending out a reminder on the 6th, and our regular council meeting should have been the 12th, not the 19th, well, you can't very well send out a reminder on the 6th, tag these people, you'd have to send out the reminder and tag them all on the same time limit. You can't tag them the Thursday before the council meeting, which means then they waited until after the council meeting, and then, on a normal basis, it's 48 hours when they tag somebody. Red tags on their door, and then they're supposed to be shut off. That is the way it is now. That is one reason why I think we have such a long past due water bill, delinquent bills, is because by the time they get shut off here, we're reading them again, okay? And they're not gonna get a bill until the 25th, and then it just, it, yes, it just no more. That, that's the way it is now, okay? And of course, having our council meetings the second Monday, and if they're not due the 5th, it does create a problem. So, that's the way it is now, okay? What's, in our committee meeting, we came up with the fact that we need to change this, okay? And the, we would like to see the meters read from the 1, 1 through 5, that gives us five days, okay? Then on the 10th, mail the bills out. This way, they would have more time to, okay, here's my bill, this is what I need. Now, we can leave it on the 5th, I think the reason why they were, we were leaving it on the 5th was because of the social security people, okay? However, if you know the bill's due, whether or not you get paid or not, if we would eliminate the 5th, that would give us more time through here, but anyway, but leave it, leave up the bills on the 5th, if they're not, we don't send out a reminder, we tag them the next day at noon, and then in 48 hours, we would shut them off, and that would be, that would be it, okay? There would be, and, and the way it is right now is because we have this 15-minute delinquent water bill, it's before the city council meeting, then supposedly they can come and talk to us about their past due bill. We're trying to eliminate all these past due bills, that's why we would like to change this, get this a little bit more, just tag them, get them shut off, and guess what? This is part of then, would be the delinquent water bill procedure. Right now, I guess anybody who has a delinquent water bill can go to anybody and plead their case, and if they decide that's what they want to do, they'll say, "Yeah, that's what you can do." Personally, I believe we need to have a delinquent bill procedure in place. I don't care if... I don't care if it's you, I don't care if it's you, I don't care if it's you, this is what it is, if you're past due, I'm not going to give you a favor because I know you. I don't know you, so I'm not going to give you a favor, I think that's what needs to be done. So, everyone's more or less treated equally. And what we're, I had, because I guess I'm the water and sewer committee chairman, I got the phone calls, well, here's somebody coming in, what am I supposed to do about their water due, their water bill? Now, my, my conception of that is, you pay your current water bill, we will give you, because we're going to have to father most of these in. Maybe on the past due bills, we will go ahead and we will work with you on that, okay? However, if you tell me you're going to pay me $50 a month and you don't, then your water bill's going to shut off, I don't, we're going to shut you off, it doesn't make any difference. If you tell me you're going to give me $20 on the 10th, and you don't pay me, guess what? On the 11th, your water is going to be shut off. But I think everybody needs to know that, and everybody gets treated the same way, okay? So, basically, we can do this, both, now, we discussed this, Barb was at our meeting, and if the bills are red, because all the, of the meter is just plugged into the computer, so she doesn't see any reason why they can't get the bills out on the 10th. That's the other thing. So, that's, that was our discussion. And I do think, but I do think something needs to be done, if you don't, if you don't want to change the water bill procedure, that's fine, but I think you need to have the, a, a resolution on how to treat all the past due accounts. So, that's it, that's what we discussed.
When you mentioned, though, that, that something about social security. It's my experience that at one time, it may have been people got their checks on first, but now it's all over the month. I know that some are the 3rd Wednesday, and 2nd Thursday, and 1st Monday, people get checks all month long now from social security. So, that is no longer an issue.
So, that's no longer an issue, okay?
But I think you've got a very good point there, if we read the meter, send the bill, there's no reason that we can't send the bill on the 10th. With the question of, when do you want the bill paid?
First, okay, I mean, personally, my opinion would be have it due at the end of each month. That way, at least, you've got three weeks in there, okay? The ideal situation, because it's at the end of the month, since our meeting is on the 2nd, they would be shut off and be done with.
But aren't you saying that we're just going to have it as a procedure, they don't pay it, they get shut off, they get tagged?
Yes, yes, yes.
We don't have to go over that?
I wouldn't think so, I think, I do think you're going to have to grandfather those that are in delinquents, that's $300 or $400 already behind, okay? I think you're going to have to deal with them on a, on a basis, this is what, you know...
And we felt that was our old procedure, was causing that problem, because now, when they can pay on the 5th of November, they're paying for September. So, they've already had a month and a half under their belt, and it worked that way, with the old one that way, and then when we gave them another 30, now, really, what we thought was 60 days, we were basically more than 90 days
Days already.
Already behind, and it just was not a, was not, you know, the long, you know, they can pay two $90 bills, it started getting into $300 and $400, and, and...
Mike, if you have a question?
I just got a question on like, street lining that a little bit, why couldn't, you know, you send that reminder out?
What, okay, in, in mine, in, in this case?
Yeah.
What I'm proposing, we're not sending a reminder out.
But why couldn't we just send the reminder out like you would, which would save a lot of man hours of us going out and tagging? And instead of being a reminder, it's a, like, silicone or whatever.
That it says it's, more or less it's a tag.
That you're not paid by this date, you are, you're not going to be shut off, this is just a friendly reminder. Then you don't have to go around and walk at everybody's door and tie red tags on, and it doesn't save you a lot of time.
Right, that, that would be the only disadvantage of tagging them. But if you send out a reminder, you're going to have to give them more than two days.
10 days.
I don't want to give them 10 days. Well, I don't...
I agree, I went for worth the day, worth the stage now, but 10 days is a long time.
Yeah, 10 days is a long time, okay? So, see, under this one, okay, I was thinking you only gave them a week, well, if you give them another 10, if you give them five more, I mean, you know, three more days than what I had, these, these people were way beyond, okay? I think maybe mailing the, the, the bill out, the reminder notice that says they're going to be shut off, as long as it goes along with...
Can you put on the...
I think it's going to have to be, I'm not sure if it can be...
Can you put on the bills, because I know SOFO does that, to avoid interruption in service, it has to be paid by this date?
Did you do the friendly reminders on the end of the month?
And then you don't have to go out and tie it, you don't have to do any of that, because they just know, if they're not paid by that date, they're shut off.
Move the due date up, and therefore move the friendly reminder up. We send the bills by the 10th and give them two, two weeks.
Is that the old one?
This is the, this is proposed, maybe, could be. Yeah, because the old one. See, I think going from the 10th to the 5th is a long time.
The policy, we actually haven't had a policy, but we've had kind of a policy, and Barb, I think, will verify this. We've had people call us, say, oh, my gosh, uh, you know, believe me, if you're a renter, or a landlord, you've heard every excuse in the world. And when you're the mayor, and you hear every excuse, and Barb has been here for many years, heard every reason in the world people haven't paid their water bills. Don't need to get into that, but what we have said to these people was, look, we're going to turn it off on Tuesday, now how much money can you pay? It's a $150 water bill, they say, well, I can bring in 50 bucks. When can you pay the rest? I can pay the rest on Friday, we say, okay, bring in 50 on Monday, and the rest on Friday, and we won't shut off your water, so that's been our policy. We've said to them, all right, how much can you pay? Give us some money, set up, and if they followed their agreement, we didn't shut them off. People sometimes have legitimate reasons.
Right, but the only thing about it is, is that you get into the fact of, you've got to have somebody, one person making the decisions for everybody, you can't have, you can't have Joe go to Rob, and Rob say, okay, well, what can you do? And then, you know, Mike goes to Don, and he says, well, no, I don't need the $50, I can do this. I think you need to have something in place. Now, as far as the past due amount and the amount, I think there you can be... What am I trying to say? I don't think that should be said in stone, I think you can take, okay, what can you do?
At some point, we have to have
Yes.
A safety net loophole for some, we can't go shut somebody off, they've got little children in the house. If they've got a legitimate reason, and they've been trying, and they've been paying their bills, and for some reason, something happens, there's some point we have to have the...
Right, but more likely, that same person is
Well, yeah, but yeah.
Done something else, but, you know, but that, that's the only thing, I still think between the 10th and the 5th is a long, a long time, okay? But if you don't tag them, which I know that's quite, I mean, I know that's intensified, okay?
You put a lot of gas in the water.
Exactly, that's why I was thinking about just mailing out them, but I think if you wait until, if you leave it here, and you give them, I, I don't think it can be, I think it's going to be a short period of time, in other words, you need to get in here, you need to pay it, or we're going to shut you off.
Well, then do that reminder, because what's happening, they'll shut you off.
Well, isn't, isn't the bills already say that, well, they don't say that you're going to get shut off?
Except the reminders do.
The reminders, the reminders actually say, because I didn't see one.
Yes.
Would you like, can we put this in the form of a proposal, are we ready for that?
I don't know if, I mean, anybody else have any questions, or, you know? I think it doesn't need to be an ordinance, I think it just needs to be
Right.
A resolution that here's, you know, here's our procedure, that's...
But we have to have some means to keep these things from getting out, and the other thing, as there's several of us, that if you have renters, one of the things you don't want is to end up owing a big bill for a renter that went on and on and on, because the city didn't turn them off. And, you know, if, if I have a rental property and I say, well, look, now, I mean, if they're more than, they got more than two bills not paid, turn them off. You know, but I, if I'm responsible for the bill, at some point, I have to have the option saying, turn this, turn this water off.
That is, we discussed, we did discuss part of that, but we really didn't come up with, I have, um, researched some of it, yes, landlords can be responsible. We, we can make landlords responsible for the bill, whether or not they knew about it or not, that I did look up.
You already have.
We are now, I mean, that's the way it is now, we, a landlord is responsible, as it stands now.
Right, but I don't think the landlord actually gets the bill, does he?
No.
They get a friendly reminder for it.
A second reminder, yeah, I get a reminder.
They get a second reminder, but you don't...
Past due reminder.
The original bill goes to the renter, and the reminder that we send out goes to the renter and the homeowner.
Rob, we're thinking of a proposal then, and how about we said if it goes out the 10th, even what, two, two, two weeks, or till the 25th? They have two weeks to pay, and then, then the, the reminder that they'll be shut off and not tagged, and that's it, goes out on like, the 26th, or the, and then that, give, give them to the end of the month, or?
After we send the reminders out, how does that, we send the reminders out, and then on the Thursday before the council meeting, we always tag them.
Right, but that doesn't always work out, because
Right.
It's a running, you know? Um, right now, they're, they are sent out on the 25th, and they
Doing the 25th.
They're due on the 5th.
Right.
Donna, I know it's been a while since our meeting, but wasn't the whole point that we weren't changing the date they were due, or giving more time notice of what their amount was going to be?
And that's why no, and that's why no or month.
Exactly, exactly.
Because they have, so there's two, I guess, two ways to do it, they're having, they're having three and a half weeks to pay, and they don't need a remind, I mean...
So, we're giving everybody within truly 60 days, you have to pay it, you're not going to have water, versus like, you go, I'll get it then.
We could do the reminder by moving up. When we mail the bill now, it would be out two weeks, and our new procedure would already be in their hands for two weeks, so then mail the reminder on the 25th. And, and they have till the week before the, the council meeting.
But then your reminder, edit it, or right now, she just doesn't, people, we gotta, no, we gotta pay.
Well, what do we need to do to come up with a plan there? Uh, I think you've got some good ideas, but I, at this point, the proposal would be great, if we had something to work with, I, you know, I don't see the, it's a tremendous issue what day you actually make the water bill due. People who are unemployed get their checks on Wednesday, generally speaking, uh, social security comes all through the month. Working people get their checks either Friday or the 15th and 31st. So, other than, you know, I mean, maybe you could try to keep that in mind, but you've got a great plan, I just don't think, and I agree with this, this craziness of these bills being 60 days old before they're even considered past due, is nuts.
And that's where, I mean, that's when looking over, that's what, you know, and this, that's how you're already that far behind, you know?
Donna? So, I, I personally, if you leave it, mail the bills out on the 10th, then on that following week, on the 17th, mail out the friendly reminders. They're due on the 5th, if they're not paid, then they're shut off on the 6th. If you mail them out on the 17th, it'll be a week later, then they've got one, two, three weeks that they're due.
You said, okay, I guess, okay.
There's a lot of people that are...
I guess, I guess what I, okay, I guess the thing about it is, if I get my, my bill on the 10th, and I get a reminder, even though it's not due, I think I'd be tipped. Okay, do you know what I mean? I mean, I mean, go like, to suck it, well, yeah, like, why don't I get...
I think we need to tighten it up, but why don't, listen to our committee. Okay, so you have somebody in real estate here, so I think you guys need to finally come up with a proposal for us, tighten this up.
Okay, well, I mean, I mean, I can, I can do, I can make a motion to do, I just don't know, I mean, what I want, and what anyone else wants, maybe.
And there were key things that we did not know, that Shane and Barb shared with us at that meeting, as far as, we didn't know how the information got put into the computer, how the bills get kicked out. It has a very easy process, it's a plug-in, and there the numbers go, but I do think there was a specific reason that that due date was being left where it was.
I think if you guys...
I think that was critical.
Well, it was because of social security, now, I worked at the bank for 10 years, and I didn't, I mean, social security came on a date, that, I've never known that it came anything other than...
Yeah, it, it's been changed, and it's going back several years now, but now social security checks come out every day of the month, everybody's got a different day they get their check.
I think it had more to do with skewing, that people are used to kind of this, and all of a sudden they get a half bill, and then they're going to get a bigger bill. I think it had more to do with freaking people out, rather than just doing a gradual change of, your, your people don't want to freak, your bills still do what it was due, or give me more notice, and then somebody, you're not just going to come talk to us if it's not paid, it's shut off, your bills just need to be fixed.
I think you got a handle on it, I think you got a handle on it, I, I just don't see why you couldn't come up with something that makes sense, I think what we have is a little antique. It just doesn't fit the times anymore.
It doesn't fit, at least not the way it looks right now.
Can you do a friendly reminder on the end of the month?
Would the friendly reminder only go to the people?
Yeah, they do.
That are due, that have a pay, right?
At least then, the, the owners would know.
I'd like to see us get to the point that when you do the water bills, before you even mail them, I'll bet there's something in that program of ours that we've got, that you can't put people's emails ahead of, and everybody gets their water bill notice, an email of their water bill, how much it is, and when it's due. Now, I don't know about some of you, but I pay mine through the bank, the bank's internet banking right now, it's easy.
That's not many, though.
Not many, Barb, but it's getting more all the time, and I'll bet, if we put our heads to this, we can come up with a much, much better system we got, because we all agree it's not working.
Yeah, I just think if you mail the reminder a week later, most people haven't even sat down to pay their bills yet. I think if, as long as there's a week in between, who still hasn't paid and when it's due, as long as you allow for a few, it's actually, they're giving her a bottom week ahead of them, I think it would be fine.
Well, if you, if you did two weeks, the bill's due in two weeks, and then those that didn't pay, the reminder goes out, well, the, well, two weeks, it really may be, the 18th to 25th.
Okay, I'm thinking...
And then, then they're given from the 25th, is to the 5th too much, or just to the end of the month, you have more weeks?
Just give them to the end of the month, because, of course, you're mailing them, you're not physically going out and tagging them, there's a lot of difference between you physically going out and tagging them and putting them in the mail, so if we would do this, have it due on the 25th, those people who don't pay get the friendly reminder on the day after, okay?
Right, yeah, right.
Did the 25th, this is going to have to be on one day, or whatever, a business day. The next day, send out the friendly reminder that says at the end of the month, you're going to be shut off, the only thing will be is February.
We're going to be sending out as many friendly reminders as we did bills, I can guarantee you that.
Have you changed that due date, because people would be very upset, and I know Shane said something about that.
Yes.
But it costs us a lot of money now to have these things tagged, we're spending a lot of money.
And I think once, once they, you know... Yeah, and I think once, once they, you know, I, there again, I think once we find, we make a resolution that we want this to happen, okay?
Everybody likes change, but we all have to change our.
Yeah, no one likes to change. I mean, that's, you know, what I think that would be.
But when you do that ultimately, because if they pay after the due date, they assess a fee for that. Yeah, absolutely. So ultimately, you're giving people less time to pay and assessing a charge limit because they can't come up with it.
Not if you go from the 10th to the 25th, because the 25th to the 5th is the same amount.
Then you're gonna give everybody a bigger bill? So you might know you're going from here. You have to shorten it a week.
No, if you're going from the 10th to the 25th, that's 15 days. You go from the 25th to the 5th, that's 15 days.
Many bills, I don't know.
It's still the same amount of time because you're just changing when you have to do.
In, in the modern world, and help me out because I'm not modern, but I look up one of my credit card bills every month on the cutoff date. For example, one bill I have to cut off on the 18th, it's usually due the 12th of the following month. That's how many days? 24 days, right? And if I don't pay it, I get a $25 late fee, okay? So I have an incentive to pay it. Can't we do something like that? I mean, isn't 24 days plenty, you know, fine?
Yeah.
So maybe 15 is not enough. Maybe, I mean, your original idea.
And that, and that's, and that's why.
I think your original idea.
To be is the, the 10th to the end of the month.
Yeah, that's 21 right there.
See, there's 21 days. Some days, some months it will only be, you know, 20, some of them will only be 19, okay? But we have seven months that have got 31 days, so the majority of the year, they're gonna have, you know, the 21 days to pay the bill.
And then give them to the 5th?
Mail them out on the first.
Which one, the original or the 10th?
The 10th.
And you want it due?
The 31st, the end of the month. It'll have to be, you'll have to say the last day of the month because you have 21 days.
Why couldn't you mail it on the 8th? If we're reading them on the 1st to the 5th.
We, how first someone took a vacation day or, we, we just figured if someone was skewed, someone got sick.
You mean it's sitting on?
Yeah, yeah. Good, but computers went down.
Yeah, something, I think that's the only reason, that's the only reason why we would put the five days in.
Pay it by the 31st or the 30th, whatever. But then when are your, when's your reminder? It will go off first?
Uh huh, the next business day.
And then that would be before our meetings even, which we're not having, we're got it. That's now.
In your skill, in your example, you've got the 1st, 5th to read them. The 6th, 7th is a week, and the 8th is a holiday.
They know what it's due.
The 9th is the first business day.
They know what it's due, so you're damn good. I think you start shutting them all off, so you get in your.
Five.
I can't flush the toilets, can't take a bath, you're pretty water.
Excellent.
So you need to do a reminder go out on the 1st?
Well, you know.
No, I'm saying that I think reminders are good, but I think the following days not. I, I don't think that, I think you should give them a couple of days after it's due. Because I, I know for a fact, you're gonna be sending out just as many friendly reminders as you are bills on the 6th.
So in other words, no one pays their bill on time?
Hmm, there are some, but there are a lot that just wait until they get their friendly reminders. Aren't there?
There's that's ridiculous, we need to choose each other.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, but I can't think, I don't think it's your fault. I don't like mailing the friendly reminders out the next day. It's, I think you need to give them a few more days.
Hold up, hold up. We've got some good ideas here. We've got some real good ideas. I think we're hung up on the friendly reminder. That's, a friendly reminder with us, we can work that out.
The friendly reminder will not be friendly. Okay, it, no, it won't be. It will be like, we're tagging.
It's a tag.
It's a tag. It's going to say, we're shutting your water off on such and such a date. It's not going to be a friendly reminder.
It says that now.
It says after the due date.
After the due date.
So don't you think we should send out these bills to the owners then on the 10th? So they know what their renter owes?
We actually could talk, we didn't make any decisions, but we talked about, and we used to do it. I know that we used to do it. There was a deposit required for renters. And by doing this, you're not getting to 90 days. If someone got stuck, assuming someone was using a demo bill, it would be covered by that deposit that was there. It's my idea, it's where it catches.
Well, it was stuck involved, you know?
I know, I'm asking the question.
It can nail it. It happens though.
As a general rule, you would catch a lot of these people. There's a lot of them who skip out, you know?
Maybe we should see what other towns are doing.
Most of them, okay, for instance, Gelsberg, if you do not pay your bill, they just shut you off. They don't send you a reminder. It says on your bill that if you do not pay this by the due date, you will come out and shut you off.
When you come out and shut you off, your bill just stops working.
Yeah, and your elders speak, don't they do that with that bill?
I don't know, I've never been behind, so.
Let's, let's contact a couple of other towns and just see what they're doing.
Okay.
Well, some are going three months, though. A bill.
Yeah, now see, Gelsberg, Gelsberg only sends out there three months.
I think three.
And that's gonna be too hot.
Because it's too much, people can't, what if they're that far behind? They can't catch up. They're already, probably they don't say like, well, yeah, you don't owe $60, you owe 100, you go.
And then they have them.
How many people, how many of us who have had one, probably have knocked on the door of a renter's house and say, why don't you cable TV with a six pack of beer and stuff?
I know.
They, they can't pay their water bill and they can't pay their rent, but they, you know? Where's your priorities here?
But that's not our problem.
It's not, but we can't, we can't let those problems become the problem of the landlord because the city is willing to let these people slide. So the city has got a responsibility here.
I know, but I'm.
That's what we're trying to.
Okay, and I guess, I think we should just put it back on unfinished business next time. I will call a couple of other municipalities just to compare to see what they, what they do here, okay?
I know a couple, we can actually contact, email us and fax us their stuff.
All right.
Smaller ones, like smaller?
Yeah, smaller communities, under 5,000.
Okay, okay.
Anything else?
No, and I, I think there again, we can't do a water bill delinquent procedure until we get this in place. Okay?
We, uh, something's done.
Thank you. I think we're at police equipment. And I guess Deb asked that, make a, a motion at this point on police equipment.
I'd like to make a motion that we upgrade our radios to become compliant.
$2,100 maximum, I think it is. You have a second? Don, seconds? Any discussion? I think also this note that they're gonna fix, they have those screwed. We'll call a vote, there's no discretion.
Okay, I got it. I got one question.
Yeah, great.
One's on heroin, all right, no.
No, that's great.
Now, how many radios exactly are we buying?
Two.
Just two, and that's not for the squad car, that's just for the?
Squad.
It's for the squad car, squad car.
Yes.
And the handhelds, we're gonna get a couple of batteries apparently. We have handhelds that don't work because the batteries got a little bit died.
So we're just maintaining those, just buying the batteries now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm.
Replacement upgrade for radios.
Robert, could I ask, we're gonna do, aren't we, are we still operating two cars?
Yes.
Is the one car up to date?
Yes.
Okay.
We're using them at the discretion of the police department.
Great, okay.
But it, it's good that we have them. We could leave them in between the two. I think we've looked at this, I mean, they're both in great condition. If we just take good care of them, we'll have many years of use. Anything else on that? Call a vote. Vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, true. We have on here the police chief position, which is a personnel matter. How would you like to handle that?
I mean, I would actually just do.
Oh, certainly.
We had talked about the taser.
Oh, the taser, that's another piece of equipment, separate from, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
We have, the officers at our community gave us some information and there were two different levels of taser. One was about $1,500 and the other was about $1,800. And then there would be $350 in training, which marks it, we need a good point. When he became, when he took that training, which was offered at only $350, he would be qualified to certify other officers on the taser. So if we had other officers in-house that needed to be certified, you do not have to go out of our department to do that. Mark would be qualified to do that. And we could also offer that service to neighboring departments, I understand, and potentially charge a fee for that. That would be $350 on top of the price.
You're aware that at one point, about 14, not 14, unless, maybe it was March, April, we had approved a non-avalancheable purchase of the taser, but we have not discussed the training or anything else pertaining to it.
And the tasers are about 800. They need a holster to carry it and the extra cartridges and, you know, of course, you always get the basic item, then you have to add the other stuff to go with it, or it really doesn't do much.
So would you break that down again, starting with the $800 taser? Because I think you said 1,800 when you were finished.
Right, um, for the port, for the package, it would be about $1,500. The taser itself was 812. There was a holster that was $32.95 and the officers both agree, I believe, that you liked the thigh holster.
I, I personally don't, I don't have any of them.
Right.
I feel well, so.
And it was a higher mark on one of those, and it was?
Seventy something.
Seventy-nine, I think, I mean, 79.
That was the best price I could find without a $3, $400 holster, which is just ridiculous.
And then three, or excuse me, six of the cartridges, and that's the 25 foot one, because there's different lasers, 15 foot, how far they shoot out, one's 25 feet. And I think you prefer the 25.
The 25, I've talked to other agencies, they all seem to use the 25. They said the 15, just, if you're out there, it's gonna go too wide, you're gonna end up missing a person. If you go to the 30, it keeps it a little too tight. I really don't know, I haven't used them, but everybody I've talked to, they just say stick with the 25.
Anyway, six of those, they're $25 a piece, we have around 150. And you can get any standard warranty for it? I think it comes with one-year standards, like air appliances, you can get four years. That's 189.95. And there was a, a data kit. Can you explain the data?
Yes, the data kit, um, the one taser, that's 800. Actually, the price has gone up since the last time you guys talked about them. I think they're what, $840 now or something for the same model. That model can be plugged into the laptop or into a computer. And if you buy the data kit, each time you use this taser, it actually registers it inside of the microprocessor or whatever's inside this fire, this taser. So that you plug it into the computer, it tells you how long it was used. So if some guy says, well, he, he let me up with that taser on the ground and just kept pushing the button, pushing the button, pushing the button. No, you plug it in the computer, it says, you got a 30-second ride, that was all you got. I didn't hold it for 10 minutes. You know, and it would be a liability and things, so you could prove that you once again tortured someone. You know, um, you actually used it for what you needed to use it, and that was it. So that allows us to plug it in our computer rather than going to an outside agency and have them download it every time it was used or, you know, update it. I'm sure there's probably updates, you probably need to, it just keeps it.
So we have the breakdown on the $1,500 package, and then the other one, which was the 1,800. Everything's just a little more expensive. It's a different model of taser, it's not, it was 950. We had a different holster, which was a little higher.
What is the difference between the two tasers?
There was the X26 and the X2. Do you know what the big difference is?
I'm not sure.
Share it, share it quick.
That's, I believe that's 26 and we have, of course. Who's that, that's, oh, that's the X2.
Was that the color? It was beige, too.
I don't believe that changed.
It was too yellowish. Yeah, so it's the same now.
And if it's cheaper, I say we'll get it, because that's what everybody's, if this is what you want to do, I don't know if we can hire.
The $1,500 package.
What are you recommending, I guess? Which one?
The $1,500 package.
And that includes everything you need.
Everything I just pulled out.
And then the training is?
Well, the holster would be a little higher because we would get the better holster. So it would be, I think that's what I think because it would be, so. Around 1,500, we could get the, the less expensive package, the X26.
Is the training in there?
That would be without the training.
Without the training, so it's not $350. So you're at roughly $1,900. I did check with insurance company, not a mission. It's just extra equipment that they insure. As far as the liability, they wouldn't seem to be concerned. So I guess what we're looking at is roughly $2,000. It'll be $2,000 if we're done. We're at $1,900 now, we'll probably miss something.
Well, like you said, that would win up about $30.
So are you, is this what you, are you guys recommending this?
Yes.
So the committee recommends this. Would you like to make a motion?
I can make a motion that we move forward with purchasing the taser and budget $2,000.
Do you have a second?
Taser and.
Yeah. Take $2,000 for equipping our police force in tasers. Any discussion? And Mark, you've agreed to take the training and be the trainer?
I, I don't have a problem taking the training.
And I have to be tased?
I don't have a problem with that. I, uh.
Well, you do it.
I'll certify and go in the room if you want me to. I believe it's a, if I may say, I mean, I believe it's a very good tool. I, uh, I mean, it's up to you if you want to spend $2,000.
But it's just a lot.
It is, it's a very good tool. I, I would use it all right. I'm not gonna go into it, but I would have used it and served it around a head go. I think the taser might have helped me a lot more. I just didn't have it at the time, you know? I think it's a very good tool. And I think it could potentially save some of those lives. I think if it came down to me having to shoot somebody, I've got to figure out whatever pathway. There's those situations that I could just, pardon my French, light them up with a taser. And after a 30-second ride, I've already got handcuffs, they're in the back of the car. It's, it's all, they're alive, I'm alive and everybody else is. So I believe it could save lives on people that are breaking laws that have had a lot of options, but can use the firearm a lot.
Is there a downside other than $2,000? Does anybody know of anything that's a downside?
Seems like it's been a while since I've spent any money on the police department. So, I mean, that's just hearsay, but the guy said, you know, they haven't spent a whole lot of money on them, so.
It's rational, it makes sense today. I think the key is our, having trained police officers who know when and how to use it.
Yeah, that's.
The downfall would be if it ever gets used, but, you know what I mean? That's not necessarily a downfall.
That's what you're saying, that would be, that would be, you know, one that you can.
It's a great alternative.
I don't know about many of you, but I'm increasingly fearful of some kid, what was it called in the 60s, getting a bad trip. You know, these people, because something happens, they get on drugs for some reason, maybe at a party, it, things happen. And maybe being able to take somebody, incapacitate somebody who, you know.
I, I know of a couple cases outside the same agency that I really can't give a lot of details on, but they are open cases, but the officer, both times, it was two separate agencies, and they both had tasers, and they told me right to my face that they would have shot the guy and killed him. But they had the taser, so they used that instead. So I mean, that's, and that's just happened lots of times.
Well, the other, the other thing, too, is that, you know, we, we have people living in our communities who don't get the kind of shelter care that they used to get, that many of us grew up accustomed to. And sometimes these people, for whatever reason, can come unglued. They're not really dangerous, but what do you do? You know, they still have to somehow subdue them. Well, without further discussion, we'll call a vote.
You have a second?
I'm sorry? Who has a second? Rob's second.
Rob's.
Aye.
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 Police chief and personnel.
I would like to ask you to adjourn to the session, to discuss the police chief.
You have a second to that?
Vote.
Okay, vote? Call, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
How would you like to do this? We can labor, they can labor, since we're all guests here at the police department. Jason, what's your suggestion?
I just have a comment, there was a binding attorney general's opinion released this week that straw poll, straw poll vote cannot be taken in the executive session.
No votes?
Not even straw polls.
Not even straw poll, no. So, what would be the best way? We used to, sometimes we would go in the back room, and then people would go outside, and it was cold outside.
We'll go out in truck bed.
Truck bed, all right, that's the best one. Mark, would you stay handy, because they want to ask you a question?